Good evening. Welcome to this Candidates Forum for the School Board for the Artsley School District. My name is Susan Maggiato and I'm the President of the League of Women Voters of the River Towns. We're very pleased tonight to be partnering with the Artsley PTSA as well as Disability Rights New York, which is providing both American Sign Language Interpretation and Closed Captioning. To see the closed captions, you can click the three-dot button on your bottom bar labeled "More", choose Captions and show captions, or perhaps you just have a button that says "Show Captions", that will work too. This evening, you will have the opportunity to listen to the candidates' views on issues of importance to the Artsley community, so that you can make an informed decision when you vote on May 21st. Our timekeeper tonight is Lynn Levine, a member of the River Towns League and a resident of Hastings. Our moderator is Susan Weisfeld, and in keeping with league policy, she is not a voter in the district. Ms. Weisfeld is a member of the River Towns League and has been a member of the league for over forty years. She's a retired graduate school communications instructor and public relations specialist. A longtime resident of Yonkers in the Armor Villa area, she tells us that she lives in a house that is over four hundred years old, which was part of a Toria estate before the American Revolution. We're very pleased to have Sue with us tonight. Just a word about the League of Women Voters. I'm sure you know the league is a voter service organization, and indeed we are. That has been our mission since our founding in nineteen twenty after women got the right to vote. But we are also an advocacy group. We lobby our legislators on issues of public policy at the local, state, and national level. How do we arrive at our positions? By member study and consensus. Our positions represent the views of our members. So in that sense, we are political. However, we are staunchly nonpartisan. That means that we never support or oppose candidates or political parties. Membership in the league is open to anyone sixteen years of age or older. Just a word about our recording policy, which both candidates have agreed to. Only the entities authorized by the league may record or livestream this forum. And only licensed media, which includes TV, radio, newspapers, are entitled by FCC regulations to air portions of the recording. Anyone else who does so must do it in its entirety. This is to ensure that the content of the forum will not be manipulated in any way to create faults or misleading impressions of any candidate. The forum is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on our YouTube channel, LWV River Towns. We will also distribute the link to the candidates, and it will be on various websites, including the PTSA's, the school districts, and of course, the leagues. So look for the link and share it with people who might not be watching tonight. There will be no audience participation tonight. The questions the candidates will be answering were submitted by members of the Artsley community, either at the time of registration or by email to the league. A committee of PTSA and league members met yesterday to review the questions. Our role was simply to organize them and, in some cases, combine questions on a similar subject in order to include as many topics as possible. With that, I will turn the meeting over to our moderator, Ms. Weisfeld.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Susan Weisfeld, and I am pleased to moderate on behalf of the League of Women Voters. At this time, I ask the candidates to make sure to please put your cellphones on vibrate, as they cannot be used during the forum. We will be asking questions submitted electronically in advance, as you just heard, by members of this community, and the audience will not be able to submit questions during this live event. We do thank those who have taken the time to submit the questions. The ground rules for this evening's event are as follows. The candidates will begin speaking in alphabetical order, and throughout the debate, I will rotate the order of candidate response. For all statements by each candidate, the timekeeper will indicate thirty seconds remaining, and then a stop sign when time is up. Candidates must stop speaking, but they can finish their sentence. There will be no questions addressed to only one candidate. All questions will be answered by each candidate. And please know that throughout the debate, no comments of a personal nature will be permitted. And also, please note that the candidates will speak to the audience and not to each other. Each candidate will have up to one minute for an opening statement with no rebuttal. The order of closing statements will be in the reverse order as the opening statements. At the conclusion of the opening statements, I will ask questions submitted by the audience, which were given to me by the sponsoring organizations. The order of responses by the candidates will be opposite to the candidate who began with the opening statement. And so, the first question will be asked by the second candidate, then we will continue to rotate for question two and so on. Each candidate will have up to one and a half minutes to answer each question, and there will be no rebuttal. However, during the entire debate, each candidate is allowed two rebuttals of thirty seconds each. If you wish to rebut, please raise your hand and request a rebuttal after both of you have finished answering a question. And after we've finished with the audience questions, candidates will have up to one minute for a closing statement, and there are no rebuttals to closing statements. So now, I would like to introduce the candidates for the Artsley School Board, Dr. Vikas Agrawal and Ms. Michelle Spinello. And now, Dr. Agrawal, you can start your opening statement. You have thirty, you have one minute, please.
Thank you, Susan. Hello, everyone, and thank you, League. My fellow candidates, Michelle and community tuning in. My name is Vikas Agrawal. I'm currently serving on the Artsley Board of Education as a trustee. Me and my wives are both physicians for the Artsley for the last eleven years, and I have two children in Artsley School District. One is seventh grader, one is ninth grader. I have greatly benefited from great education, and I consider myself as a lifelong learner. I firmly believe the great education is essentially achieving life's ultimate goals, health, wealth, and happiness. Here's the three reasons I like to bring to the table if I get elected. Number one, analytical skills. My background as a physician and neurologist sharpens my ability to analyze data and understand human behavior, enhancing problem-solving skill. Number two, diverse experience. I bring a wide range of voluntary experience in the community settings, such as Artsley League Board Member, Yonkers Health Advisory Committee, and as well as several other board members. And also, number three, I have proven...
I'm sorry, I have to stop. You have to stop. You'll have more time to speak. Okay, Ms. Spinello, you have one minute for an opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you to the league and thank you to everyone for being here. I'm Michelle Spinello. I'm a mom of two Artsley graduates. I've lived in the community for twelve years. I've been involved in many, many, many community events and activities. Probably the longest one, I was on the Booster Club for six years, where I ran homecoming, I built the website, I did the social media, and I've been a Girl Scout leader as well. I think what inspired me to run is that for the past three years, I've been advocating for improvement in the math curriculum. I think it's really important. I decided to run after my kids have graduated, because at this time, I have no agenda. My only agenda is to be the voice of the community and to work with the school administration to make sure that we're getting feedback and we're getting, you know, answers to our questions. What I can bring to the table, I'm a project manager, I'm a data analyst. I have knowledge of strategic planning. I have action planning knowledge. I have technology knowledge.
You have to stop.
Thank you.
Both of you will have a lot more opportunity to speak. Okay, so now we're going to start with the questions from the community, and I'm going to ask the first question to Ms. Spinello. You have ninety seconds. What do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education? And how does the role of the Board differ from that of the superintendent?
So I see the role of the board members as kind of a bridge between the community and the school administration. And I think my role is to be an advocate for the community and make sure that the superintendent understands what the community needs and that we're moving in the right direction. And I think that the superintendent brings the expertise in education. The superintendent is going to put together the strategic plan in order to fix some of our issues. But I think, again, it's the board member's responsibility to make sure that the direction we're moving in is serving the community and the students.
Thank you. Dr. Agrawal, do you want me to reread the question?
No, I'm fine. Thank you. So, this is a very good question. And the role of the school board member is to serve as a policymaker for the school district and also participate in putting the agenda for the district as well as curriculum and budget. Budgetry as well as community need and prioritizing how to use the money. That is one of the very important, and also participating in long-term planning. As well as superintendent is more of a chief executive officer. He kind of execute the vision, which is endorsed by the board. So superintendent does day-to-day functioning. He communicates with the community, and he also achieve the goals which board has set out for the superintendent. And there's also a lot of committee where board members, as well as assistant superintendent, they kind of collaborate and where they kind of interact and kind of fine-tune things so they can come to the agreement. There may be sometimes a little bit of overlap, and the board can be micromanaging, and the superintendent may also be some policy issues. But I think that has to be sorted out by good communication and having a good relationship and having open communication and understanding each other and making personal connection. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next question, we start with Dr. Agrawal. What volunteer and professional experiences have you had that will impact your role as a school board member?
Thank you, Susan, for asking this question. I have been volunteering a lot of activities in the community. Just to give you some example, I have been volunteering for Yonkers Health Advisory Committee, and I volunteer for Artsley Little League. Actually, I volunteer whenever people ask me to help. And this is how it started. The first time, there was no coach, and I don't even know too much of a good baseball, and league asked me if I can coach, so I jump in. And then that year, and I was lucky enough to find two coaches, and we have an eight-one season, it was a blockbuster. So I volunteer in the community. We started a five K in the community, and I'm a volunteer doing activities for Diwali function in the community and my temple. So I have a variety of experiences in the community, and I see these volunteer experiences as an organic intelligence, like we have artificial intelligence. The more you volunteer, more you soak up the data, the better you become making a decision-making. And also, you develop a lot of community connection. I'm sorry, you say?
Yeah, you have to stop.
No, sorry, my mistake. Continue, please continue. You've got, you have eighteen seconds.
So, that's how you develop in-depth understanding with the community. You interact with people, and you understand them emotionally. So this experience, I think, is very useful as part of the school board member, but this is the same community, which has same aspirations, and we interact with several levels. Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Spinello. Do you want me to reread, do you want me to give you the question again?
No, I think I'm okay.
Okay.
So over the years, I've done a lot of volunteering in the community. I think I've been very visible. When I first moved to Artsley, I started a Girl Scout troop, and that's how I met a lot of moms and a lot of friends. I also bridged that group with a Hastings group to kind of connect kids in Artsley with Hastings. So that was kind of fun. And then, when my kids went to high school, I got involved in the Artsley Panther Booster Club, which I think has been a great community organization. I got involved when the basketball team won the championship, and everybody was so excited. And we worked through a tragedy in the community. We did the HH Strong t-shirts. I was there for that. I built the website for the Booster Club. I built the social media for the Booster Club. I was the treasurer for two years. I really have a lot of love for this community. I've met a lot of wonderful people. I've done Artsley Cares Day. I read, I did the Midnight Run event for two years, and I volunteered at many, many school activities with my children, athletics and otherwise. And I think it's very important to get involved. That's how I've met most of my friends. And it's been a joy, really, to volunteer in the community and be active in the community.
Thank you. Ms. Spinello, I'm going to start the third question with you. What are your top three priorities for the school district?
Yes, so my number one priority is communication and accountability. I do feel like, time after time, people are saying the same things and complaining about the same issues, and we don't have a plan that is clearly defined anywhere on a website that people can access and understand what the progress is on the problem. So I'll give you an example. The math curriculum, I think that a lot of people are struggling to understand. Kids are struggling. What we need is a plan to address the issues that's clearly defined. So, and accountability. And if we can't meet our goals, then we have to hold people accountable for that and find out why. My second initiative, I think, is to work through and understand the taxes and the budget. Our taxes are too high. There are people in the community that don't have kids in the school that are very concerned. They go up every year. So I'm definitely going to be asking a lot of questions and being very transparent with people in the community about that and looking to see if we can have cost savings. And then, my third are curriculum improvements. I think that talking to a lot of people in the community, special education needs some work. We need to understand more why it takes so long for a student in our district to get a plan for an IEP. We need to work on our math curriculum. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Agrawal.
Hi. I also want to say what Michelle says. These are all continuous concern for the school, and communication is not just a one event. It's just an ongoing process, and we just have to keep doing better and better. Communication, culture. Three priorities at this moment are, one is we have to oversee fifty million-dollar project. Artsley has not done such a large project, so we have to pay a lot of attention. There's a lot of integrating and moving parts. Number two, there's a lot of new leadership changes. In Artsley, there's new CRS principle, there's a new superintendent, and it will take some time adjustment. And also, me being on the board, I provide some stability and institutional memory and knowledge, so we can carry out a smooth transition. Number three, I think our community or our school and any school in America is going through a lot of mental health crisis and as well as there is a need to everybody to feel they belong and they are safe and they are welcome. And also, curriculum is also my priority, because there has been a lot of access point where special need kids, as well as economically less fortunate kids are need to have access to curriculum, so they can continue to perform better and as well as it's a matter of equity. So they also have an opportunity, equal opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Dr. Agrawal, the next question you begin. The community has expressed concern about communication within the school district, including from residents who are not digitally connected with the district. Please provide specific ways you will improve communication with all community stakeholders.
So, communication, as I said earlier, is an ongoing process. And we are a community of four thousand adults approximately, and everybody has a very unique need, communicate. Some people communicate text better, some people communicate with emails, some like to be on social media. I think we need to understand where we are lacking. And since I've been on the board, there has been some improvement in communication. But also, we need to improve communication with teacher to student or to the families in a timely manner. And there have been some incidences that they were not able to get back to the families in timely manner. I think we have to set some policy and standard. So the board role is set the policy and see where the problem is. So I understand there is a variety of communication need for each individual family. So we have to look into, should we also try to communicate on social media, also texting, and also to see if we can use a portal where we check our grades, if that portal can be a part of the communication. So these are the important level of communication. And also, as a board member, I also struggle. Also, as a parent, I struggle, because there's so many information coming in and how to design this information. I think building a good website would be another way to go, because there's parents also seeking a lot of help, and sometimes they aren't able to find all that information, how to get into AP courses, what are the criteria for honors and all these things. So we need to do a more comprehensive job. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Spinello. Do you want me to reread the question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Could you? Thank you.
Yeah. The community has expressed concern about communication within the school district, including from residents who are not digitally connected with the district. Please provide specific ways you will improve communication with all community stakeholders.
Thank you. So one thing I can say is that I feel that I'm a communications expert. In my job, every day, I need to gather feedback and disseminate information to people in an easily digestible form. So one thing that I think we must do is we have to try to leverage some modern technology like AI, for example, to summarize these very long board meetings so that people who don't have time can access a summary and they understand what's going on. I also think we need one central place, so to keep communication. So the website of the school absolutely needs to be updated, and it needs to be reorganized, so people understand where they can find the information they need. In regards to people who aren't very digitally connected, maybe our older population, we may need to do some outreach and work with the town so that they feel that they are included and we're hearing them. You know, we know that they have concerns. People in the school that don't have children in the school don't necessarily get the emails anymore. So we have to make sure that there are channels for everyone to get information. And I'm willing to work with the school to figure out how we can provide people the feedback that they need and deserve, because parents aren't getting their feedback. Thank you.
Okay, great. Now, the next question, Ms. Spinello. What does DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, mean to you as it relates to the Artsley School District?
Yes, so DEI means to me that everyone has a voice and everyone has a seat at the table. I did join the DEI committee when it was formed back in, I think, twenty twenty-one. And to tell you the truth, I was there for a year, and I'm still not even clear on what came out of that whole year. Because if I go onto the website, the information is very old. It still references Duncan Wilson, who was our Director of Curriculum, who left last year. So I think DEI needs a relook. It needs a refresh. I think that we have to get more people involved. I think we need a better strategic plan. I think that I would like to see activities that get the kids engaged and excited. Like, for example, the International Fair is typically run by the parents, by the PTA. When I was in school, it was a project run by the students, and the students presented it. Or, you know, I just saw recently, there's a Chinese dance company in Artsley. Maybe they could do a clinic for the students. So we have to rethink it. We have to bring in the parents. We have to communicate with the parents and let the parents be clear on what is being taught to the children. It's very important. We have to have transparency. And I think through transparency and communication, people will feel like they belong.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Agrawal.
Hi. So DEI is a very complicated subject, and I'm not an expert. Well, I'll try to share my thoughts. So I want to confine my thoughts related to Artsley and Artsley School District. So when I'm saying DEI, I'm not talking about what's going on in the rest of the country, other places. So diversity is very good. We live in the most diverse community, and our community is celebrated. Everywhere I go, when I was campaigning, everybody loved the community, and Artsley is the number one community in the whole West Texas, or twenty-four in the whole country. Diversity is good for the children, but they learn from each other and is good for their future, because world is very diverse and America will get more diverse. So I fully embrace the concept of DEI. And if you see inclusiveness, this is like a breathing air. We need to have every child feel they belong and they feel safe and they're welcome, so they can focus, they can feel good, and they can focus on studies. So this is like a breathing air, so they can do better. And real goal is to be healthy, wealthy, and happy. And also, equity, what I understand, that everybody should have equitable opportunities, and some people who need some push, we are here to help them, such as if there are special need kids or if there's economically disadvantaged kids. So I fully embrace this view of the DEI, and I think our community has been blessed. And when I talk to the administration... Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
My time is, thank you.
I know. Sorry. Okay, Dr. Agrawal. There have been reports of incidents of bias in the school district. What experience have you had that demonstrate your commitment to addressing these harmful experiences?
So, I mean, I can talk about, as my personal experiences, and I can talk about as a board member. So, you know, Artsley is a very diverse community, and we feel so safe, so connected, and so welcome in this community, and it's such a great place. Everybody says the same thing, and I met so many seniors, so many people who did not have children in the school and people who have children in the school. So, but there has been a recent incident happened where my signs were vandalized, and initially, I was upset. Then, I feel that whoever did that, I forgive them. Not because the person who did that has to be forgiven, because I feel it makes me at peace with myself and I have to move on. So this is my personality. Sometime, I go some other places. Sometime, there is a roughness, and people say, hey, go back to your own country. So I feel a little disappointed, but when I come back to Artsley, I feel very safe, and I just forgive. As far as a board member is concerned, I know the board, a lot of things going on, but in our Artsley, it's not perfect. But our, there has not been any spike in any incidences in our school community as far as anti-Semitic activity or anti-Muslim activity. So which just indicate, but I would like to, education, anti-bias training, and also, community to talk to each other, try to address those issue, if those issues arises in our community and our school district. That's my approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spinello.
I'm sorry, could you repeat it one more time?
Sure. There have been reports of incidents of bias in the school district. What experiences have you had that demonstrate your commitment to addressing these harmful experiences?
So I think... So I think um it's very important uh to be, as a board member. To work with the school to be sure that um there is appropriate responses to incidents of bias. I do believe that um these issues need to be worked out in the school between the parents and the students. Um, I think we need to be very careful about publicizing these things. On social media. Um, I think that especially because we're dealing with children. I think that children can be taught to do better. I think children make mistakes. I think um. If they learn to forgive and collaborate and work together, I think that they can move beyond. I think that there should be, you know, training to help them have healthy conversations. I think there, thank you. I think that they should um. Learn how to have healthy disagreements, but I also think that the school needs to be a place of neutrality. I think when we're talking about, you know, issues, we, we have to support everyone. And we can correct bad behavior um and, and move beyond it. I really believe that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Beniallo, uh, we're gonna start the next question. Um, as a board member, what assessments would you use to understand the district's support and services? To students with disabilities? And how would you continue to optimize special education in the district?
Well, first of all, I think we need a clear understanding of what the process is for. Parents to apply um within the school to have their children evaluated. That doesn't seem to be clear to me. Um, so I think we start there. I think we also need to start looking at data. Um, the grade book isn't open. I think that we need to identify the students that are falling behind and be proactive about it, rather than reactive. Um, so I'd like to see, I mean, in the middle school and the high school, we can absolutely. Start looking at grades every month to see who the children are that are struggling and get them help. Before they, before they fall too far behind. I think in Concord Road, it's really, we have to rely on the teachers. I think the teachers are the first lines of defense. I think that. The teachers know the students best. I think the teachers need to have a good, close working relationship with the parents. Um, so if they're seeing a child that's falling behind, they can get them evaluated. And get them services sooner rather than later. Um, and not having to wait so long. So I would definitely advocate, I'm not an expert in special ed. Uh, but I definitely think we need a better partnership between the parents and the special education department. Uh, to work together and improve some of the processes there.
Thank you. Dr. Agarwal, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, no, I'm fine. Thank you. Thank you, Susan. So, I mean, this is something I. Uh, very close to my heart. First of all, it's a good issue and as well as, as a neurologist, it's not my expertise, but I understand. Uh, how this thing works. There can be, uh, anybody can brought this up to the school administration, either by parents or teacher. Or just behavior admin, uh, observation. And then there is a, um, there's a committee before the schooling starts. Uh, preschooling and also during school. And we have a new, new process. We are trying to install and this is a lot of work and this is gonna be a quite revolutionary, it's called MTSS, multi-tier. Uh, support system, which is, which include every child, whoever is in zero to eighth grade. And they, they will gonna be academically observed and monitored and, and picked up early during the process. And there's a multi-tier process. So, so this is like first tier is everybody get the good, good um, uh, you know. Good classes and their teacher observe. And if there's some students are behind. Then they go into small groups and they specialize, they focus to try to help them. And if they're still not catching up, then go to the level three. So this is MTSS and the other system in place. And there can be some child who just suffer from anxiety, it'll actually they're fine. So that need to be picked up because when you control the anxiety, they do very well. Or sometime there can be child who are a little bit behind, but they have some, they don't have anxiety issue. So it is something um. Uh, it's process already placed and we are very exceptional district in a sense. Artsley is known for special education. We just have to do a little bit better.
Okay, I'm sorry. When, when the timekeeper holds up the stop sign, please, um, all of you, both of you stop. Okay, um, the next question, Dr. Agarwal. Keeping in mind current events and advances in technology. How would you ensure that the curriculum remains relevant and prepares our students for the changing demands? Of the twenty-first century workplace?
Well, Susan, the moment you ask this question, the one thing pops up in your mind is artificial intelligence. That's a hot topic. And it seems like we are all affected by this and there can be several other things like anti-bias training. And um, and uh, and curriculum is a continuous process, observation and coming up with new things. Artsley offer a variety of courses, but this can also be offered. We can also optimize. Um, a lot of AP courses, we can start AP course early in ninth grade. So a lot of uh student uh of families complain that there's not enough AP courses in the university school system. But coming back to the technology wise, AI is something is very fascinating. It will change how we teach. We are all very unique human being. The Earth has eight billion people and our brain is so complex with hundred billion neurons. So we are very unique and useful. The AI will be able to very uniquely. Teach each and every children according to their academic needs. So this is, and then it can help teacher not to do too much administration work. They can be able to check their homework. And they can also be private tutor at very low cost. And there, there can also be a lot of thing you can devise gamification. So everybody plays this video game, so you can de- design those games where a lot of technology can be used. To simulate and also virtual reality. So there's a lot of things are cooking. It may not live up to the hype. But there's a lot of excitement. I'm not an expert. This is something, I'm, I'm kind of very agonist. I'm skeptical as well, except excited. But I don't know how it's gonna play out. Thank you.
Okay, um, do you want me to repeat the question, Ms. Beniallo?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, um, keeping in mind current events and advances in technology. How would you ensure that the curriculum remains relevant? And prepares our students for the changing demands of the twenty-first century workplace?
So for me, this is where the math curriculum becomes very, very important. Um, I work in tech every day. I work in AI every day. I work with developers and coders. You need a solid foundation of math and logic skills to even. Begin to understand what's going on with all of these new tools on the market today. And I do think that technology has to be appropriate for the children. I don't think that in elementary school, AI is something that's appropriate for children. I think that we need to think through if um Google Classroom in the younger grades are really serving the children. Um, we need to improve the math curriculum so that our kids have a foundation for this. I think there should be better commu- com- computer science program. Um, in the schools because I have heard some things about computer science. I think it can be improved. I think maybe all of the kids can get some computer science. It's very important. Um, but I think we have to be careful. I think we can use AI at the teacher level. To identify gaps in data. I think we can use it in the school to, you know, on the budget. And things like that, but I, for the children, I think it has to be appropriate for them. I don't think that in the younger grades, I think they need a foundation first before the technology.
Thank you.
I would like to make a point.
Okay. Oh, you have thirty seconds. This is your rebuttal?
Yes, yes. So just to um, just to emphasize what Michelle is saying. I think there's a broad agreement. The math is very important part of the curriculum. And there was a math consultant hired last year, which made very, very multiple specific recommendation. And because of that recommendation, we are trying to align our curriculum with the New York State best practices. And um, and uh, so there is a sequencing of change from, from uh Algebra one. And then geometry and Algebra two and pre-calculus. So there has been changes and the board and the superintendent is working. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we have to go according to the time rules. Um, okay, uh, so now we're up to another question and we start with Ms. Beniallo. We are seeing increasing disruption related to extreme rainfall, heat waves, wildfire smoke. And threats to public health and safety. How do you plan to lead the district in adapting to a rapidly changing climate? So that we are better prepared as a learning community? If you want me to repeat that, I will.
No, no, I think I'm good. I think that what first comes to mind, um, there have been a lot of issues with power in the middle school. We are taking out a very large bond. I don't know if the assessment of the building. Included an assessment of the power there and, you know, how we could set up workarounds. Um, but we need to make sure that the children are able to go to school. So I, I think that we're gonna have to work with, I'm assuming the school has an engineer. To assess if there's a flood risk to the school, if there's anything we could do in terms of drainage. We're gonna have to work with Con Edison to work through these problems and understand why the power keeps going out in the middle school. Um, I think it's also very important. I think we recently updated our HVAC system. Um, the, the extreme heat is a concern. And I'm, I'm hopeful that we have air conditioning for the kids so that they're able to go to school. You know, in the end of the months of the year and the early months of the fall, when it could be very hot. But I do believe it's very important for the kids to be present in school. So again, we need to assess the issues, come up with a strategic plan and make that clear to the community. How we're going to, you know, tackle any problems that may come our way. And we're lucky that we have technology because in the unlikely event, they can do online school, not advisable. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Um, Dr. Agarwal, do you want me to uh reread the question?
Yes, yes. Can you just please repeat my name?
Uh, we are seeing increase, increasing disruption related to extreme rainfall, heat waves, wildfire smoke. And threats to public health and safety. How do you plan to lead the district in adapting to a rapidly changing climate? So that we are better prepared as a learning community?
So, yes, so to answer this question, there is a multiple aspect to this, this problem. And some of the problems is beyond school district level. And, but we do have a safety and security plan. Which is listed on the website, some of the things uh which are shareable and some of the things are not shared with the com- public. So, in case of emergency, I mean, emergency may happen. So I just wanna reassure the community, there's a plan. And there's a chain of command. And um, so that is something related to something acutely happen. If there is a power failure or there's something earthquake or we recently had a earthquake experience. And there was a lot of parents were asking, what is our strategy? So we have a safety plan in place. Secondly, we need to teach our children how to be environmentally conscious. Because this is, I think, one of the, one of the biggest threat to humanity. And this is not gonna be solved with a small community like us, but at least we can do our share. We can be more, uh, you know. Using more alternative methods of uh, which we are doing in the school. We have a solar panel. And also being carbon neutral and uh being uh, be conscious with the garbage. But um, so, and as far as the specific point about the electricity failure um, in middle school. That has been being addressed by uh Con Ed and, and what I hear from administration, it will soon be fixed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next question, we begin with Dr. Agarwal. What guidance will you provide to the administration about issues such as free speech in school? The selection of books and the expression of student voices?
So, I'm, I'm a supporter of free speech. And, and also, uh, there's a lot of data about the age appropriateness. And what children's need to be exposed. Uh, there has not been any, anything which come up to the board level. Which we have to de- debate and make decision in our community. There has been um, some, some email we received. About books, but mostly uh, there has not been come up at the level where we have to make any decision. And I think every person is very unique in a way that if people wants to persuade. Whatever their goals or whatever their wishes and values are, especially at times uh. You know, we have to be supportive of those uh, those priorities of the children's. And, and it's, it's, it's very hard to make any broad judgment, but I'm, I'm a supporter of free, free speech. First Amendment rights and um, but I'm also believe that each human being is very unique. And we have to take into that perspective that we fulfill their desire to live or, or practice however they want to do. But at the same time, age appropriateness is also important. So I think we have to balance all these factor. And with, there's very unique situation, artsly, then we have to handle head on with that issue. Thank you.
Ms. Beniallo, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please.
What guidance will you provide to the administration about issues such as free speech in school? The selection of books and the expression of student voices?
So I do, I believe in free speech, um, but I also think that there are boundaries in a school. I don't believe that um, you know, we have to be careful. Even though you ha- you have free speech, I do believe that teachers need to be neutral in their beliefs. And um, you know, not expressing their political views to the kids. I think you, the kids. Um, should be able to speak freely, but you can't provoke someone, right? So we have to promote healthy speech. I also think that um, age appropriateness is very important. Um, again, if there are books in the library that people may feel are inappropriate. I think the parents need to be made aware of what's in the library. The parents need to be made aware of um. What is being read to the children, if it may be considered um. Controversial or not PC. So I think transparency is key. Um, and I, I would ask the school to be very transparent with the parents. And I do believe the parents have a choice. If they don't want their child exposed to something. They should be able to weigh in on that. I do believe that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next question, Ms. Beniallo, you will begin. Our community is made up of people with broad economic depth. The, what strategies and programs do you wish to implement for free and reduced lunch eligible students? To give them the necessary resources to succeed?
So, from what I know, I think that the free and reduced lunch program is based on income. So I would definitely encourage people to fill out the form um and take advantage of those programs. Absolutely. Um, I also think um, for people with lower income, we have to consider. The costs of living here. We have to consider the taxes. Um, there are certain clubs in the high school. That cost a lot of money and people can't participate because there are large fees. So I think we have to look at that. I think that um, we have to make sure that. We're giving all kids the opportunity to participate. Um, and the free and reduced lunch program, I don't know, I'm gonna be honest. I, I don't know, I, I would work with the board to understand how we could increase the program. How we could increase the program and make sure that all of the children are getting what they need, because food is very, very important. Um, but I would have to learn more about that. Going to be honest.
Thank you, Dr. Agarwal. Do you want me to repeat the question?
Could you please repeat the question?
Sure. Our community is made up of people with broad economic diversity. What strategies and programs do you wish to implement for free and reduced lunch eligible students? To give them the necessary resources to succeed?
So, yes, so you know, um, Westchester, Portnum School Board comes out with their little booklet every year and it, they, they talk about. How many percentage of families living in the school districts are economically disadvantaged? So Artsley has approximately thirteen percent. So it's not about the food. Food cost is very low, but what the question is asking is. How can we support this, this families? So this is a very relevant questions and I think uh. It, it goes to the hurt of what's happening, the society inequality and. What kind of opportunities and what can we do, people who are, who are blessed and uh, to support our community? And as a school um, budget, there, they cannot subsidize. Across the aisle, so, which is limited. I think it's, it's, it's beyond a little bit of. School issues that we cannot just waive the fee for, let's say, summer camp or some. Some, some other activities involved in the school, but there's a lot of different organization, Panthers Fund, um. Fund and also I know on Board of Little League, they waive the fees for a lot of sports activity and there is a other organization with support. But for the family who's looking specifically any help, I think the website building would be a good, good alternative to give them good comprehensive information. I know. In a special education setting, uh, the school can also help through the social worker, uh, help them to get the Medicaid. Uh, so there's a lot of resources have available. We have to work with social worker to provide them more resources. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we now have one last question and we start with Dr. Agarwal. How do you plan to check the pulse of the district and community? And solicit feedback from parents, teachers and community stakeholders?
So, I mean. This is a very. Important question. This goes to the heart of democracy that. Is it, um, we need to know what we're doing, what community wanted? And as a board member, if you look what we do, we are very sensitive, very cognizant about. How the community give us a feedback and sometimes we struggle, then what does the community want? So. There is several resources, people sending us an email, number one. Number two, we all are connected to the community. We go to all the events. And me having children's, two children's in the school, which is seventh grader, ninth grader certainly helped me. And uh, so last week I went to three events and concert, there was a student parents. Um, forum and there was a science, uh, science symposium. So these are the. Opportunity when you interact with a lot of parents and student and the, and the teacher and get a pulse, what's going on in the community? And what do they want and all the issue we have discussed. If we do something which is not um, gonna be successful with the community. Those thing leads to a lot of uh, disharmony and a lot of uh, communication issue, a lot of mistrust issue. So I think it's important, either we do survey or we have a proper way of uh, getting sense. Or doing some, you know, town hall meeting. Uh, so those are things are important to get a feedback from the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Beniallo, do you want me to reread the question?
Yes, please.
Okay, how do you plan to check the pulse of the district and community? And solicit feedback from parents, teachers and community stakeholders?
So I want people to know that I am accessible. I will answer your emails if you email me as a board member. But I also think it's very important. Um, to have someone at the school that is primarily responsible for giving feedback to the parents. I think that's what we're missing. And I think, um, I'm, I would like to talk to the school administration about getting one person. To aggregate the community feedback because I feel like people. Say the same things over and over and over again and we really don't get answers. So if there's a point person. At the school to collect feedback, um, and make sure that they're giving. The right answers to the public or putting something on the website. In terms of progress on a project or an initiative that we're working on. I wanna make sure we do that. And again, I promise that I will answer people. My children are not in the school anymore, but I am, I'm here in the community. I attend events. I think that we need to bring in uh, the people that are not, don't have children in the school. They have a vested interest in the school district just as much as the parents. So I'm committed. To collaboration. I'm committed to community engagement. I think we can use more modern tools. Um, I've done surveys of companies. Nationwide, all over the world. There is fun things we can do.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I wanna thank you both candidates.
Can I do a rebuttal on this? So just to uh, clarify my point that. Um, board member who has a, students in the school, they have extra tools. So they don't have a disadvantage. I, I'm, I'm as, as accessible. As involved in the community, plus I have children. So this is not a disadvantage. And everything new, new thing we do, we do as a, as a group, board work as a group. So. One person cannot change the, change or hire something and uh, th- there is a lot of priority we have to go through and at that time. If, uh, uh, just to hire, promising hire. Is, is really a collective board decision and has to come from administration. We have to look at the resources. We have to see what is our priority and what is the best.
You need to stop. Okay, um, you had two rebuttals. Um, Ms. Beniallo, do you have any need for a rebuttal?
Um, on this topic?
On any topic. Okay.
Well, thank you. Um, I, I think I'm okay.
Okay, and so I really wanna thank the candidates for really great answers. I don't live in Artsley and I've learned a lot tonight. And now we're ready for closing statements and Ms. Beniallo, you have one minute for your closing statement.
All right, well, I wanna thank the community for attending. Um, it's really been a pleasure to talk to everyone tonight. Um, I do feel very strongly that I am the right candidate. I think I can bring new, fresh energy to the role. I think my skills as a project manager, um, and strategic planner are. You know, very much needed in the district and what I promise to do is be the voice of the community. And make sure that we're getting answers and that we're, we have a plan, an actionable plan that we can. View our progress, even on the capital project. We need to understand how the money is being spent. Are we. Sourcing the best costs? Are we knowledge sharing with other districts about? What they've done wrong or what they've done better with their capital projects? I think. I am the right person to bring people together. I want to get things done. I want to share all the feedback with the community and I thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Agarwal.
Hello, uh, thank you, uh, all community members for tuning in. I like to say it's been my honor to serve on the Artsley Board of Education for the last three years. And I'm committed to serving all student, student. I emphasize all students. And I'd like to take a moment to just tell everybody what is the vision of the district. It's not my vision, it's collective vision. Because these are very important, just in four, four sentences. Number one, robust curricular and extracurricular offering. Data-driven analysis to improve outcome for every student, academic and social emotional support to all the students. And number four, responsive and accounting leadership. So I'm hundred percent committed to all the vision of the Artsley. School district. And there's a true reason I should be uh, on your board. Number one, I have two children in the school district, which are my eyes and ears. And helping to connect with parents, students and teachers. Number two, Artsley School District is going significant generation change. Including new leadership, capital project. And I believe my experience equipped me to offer valuable institutional memory and knowledge. And, and to summarize, please come out and vote on twenty-first and vote for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, I would like to thank everyone for virtually joining us this evening. And in closing, of course, I would like to encourage everyone to vote. Election Day is Tuesday, May twenty-first, excuse me, between the hours of six AM. Sorry, and ten AM and again between two PM and nine PM. And the polling place is within Artsley High School. If you have any questions or comments about this or any election. Please feel free to contact the League of Women Voters of the River Tones on our website, which is LWV-RiverTowns.org. And thank you all and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.